I'd like to call a regular meeting of council to order, Monday, January eighteenth, 2021. Approval of the agenda, please. Counselor Norbury?
Set the agenda for the regular council meeting on Monday, January eighteenth, 2021. Be adopted as presented.
Seconder, Counselor Lehman. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Adoption of minutes. December seventh, 2020, regular meeting of council minutes. Counselor Lehman?
Fifty minutes of Monday, December seventh, 2020, regular meeting of council. Be adopted as presented.
Seconder, Counselor Hall. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Three point two, January seventh, 2020, special meeting of council minutes. Counselor Majinsky?
At the minutes of the Monday, January seventh, 2020, 2021, special meeting of council. Be adopted as presented.
Seconder, Counselor Kirby. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Any business arising from the minutes, counsel? Staff? Thank you. Consent agenda, recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury?
Set all items in the Monday, January eighteenth, 2021 consent agenda. Be moved for information.
Seconder, Counselor Kirby. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Any items the council wished to lift off the consent agenda? Okay. Thank you. Eight point one, bylaws. Emergency measures bylaw adoption. Report dated January eighteenth, 2021, from the Director of Protective Services requesting that the District of Tumbler Ridge Emergency Program Bylaw six nine nine, 2020, be adopted. Recommendation, please. Counselor Majinsky?
At the District of Tumbler Ridge Emergency Program Bylaw six nine nine, 2020, be adopted.
Seconder, Counselor Kirby. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Nine point one, Resource Municipalities Coalition Support. Report dated January eighteenth, 2021, by the Chief Administrative Officer regarding entering into an MOU, the Resource Municipalities Coalition, for a three-year term. Recommendation? Counselor Kirby?
Our recommendation on the floor that the District of Tumbler Ridge enter into memorandum of understanding with the Resource Municipalities Coalition for a three-year term from January first, 2021, to December thirty first, 2023, recognizing the importance of responsible resource development in that region.
Seconder, Counselor Gukalka.
I'll start off by saying I think this is a very important and beneficial partnership with the other communities in our region, and I found it a lot of value in support that we can gain through the coalition for various initiatives. And I'm really looking forward to the upcoming rail analysis as well. I think that'll be a very important document to collect data for future development in our region, so very much in support of this. Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Nine point two, bulky waste cost. Staff report dated January eighteenth, 2021, from the Director of Operations and Infrastructure, requesting that staff provide rationale and cost for having bulky waste removed from the regional landfills. I'd like to move this report for discussion. Seconder, Counselor Majinsky. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Counselor Hall?
Oh, just want to ask a question here about the metal bins that have been in operation since 2015. It says that it's going from a point where we basically used to break even by giving them scrap, and at this point now, we're going to a place where we're going to have to pay to get rid of bins. That in place at this point now that we're now paying to get rid of our scrap metal.
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, counsel. I'll have Director Beal respond to that. I do know if you ever contacted ABC Recycling.
Mr. Beal?
Ms. Thompson, worshiped counsel. So, in the previous years, we've been, we have collected some revenue on our scrap steel, but mostly the transportation costs, I mean, I don't know. It's now come to my attention, a service provider that it's costing them approximately eight hundred dollars every time they come in to replace our bins. So they are losing money, and it's not their business model. It certainly is a benefit to the District of Tumbler Ridge to have our scrap steel removed. I'm not sure if it's supposed to be a proper number, big piles we have down there, that'll link up. So right now, the cost is based on what the market value of the steel is. We still get revenue, but that may be offset by some of the transportation costs. So there is some flexibility there, but there is still the cost of this. I'm looking at another program right now, it's called Mars Program, and that has to do with white metal that we will be collecting more revenue on by separating that white metal over the main steel stream. So I'm looking at trying to increase the revenue. Right now, the ABC service provider has delivered some of the biggest services over the last few years, but it's reasonable that they don't lose money in that process.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Hall?
Yeah, the reason I ask is like, just out of curiosity, if we have a BEP or break-even point on the tonnage that we're shipping out. Recently, a friend of mine works in the scrap steel industry and told me that scrap steel prices are almost at three-year highs at this point now, and they've certainly come up since probably the conversation we had with ABC Recycling from the summer. So if we have a mechanism in place where we are selling scrap steel as the price is higher to them, which I think you just indicated we are, do we know where that break-even point is? Where does scrap steel need to be where we aren't losing money to ship the steel at eight hundred, eight hundred dollars a load? You know, that's, that's right now, less than two tons of steel. If that's what the cost is, that's all we need to get rid of, to pay for the eight hundred dollars up?
Ms. Thompson?
I thought Mr. Beal had locked back, I'm not sure if he wants those numbers.
Uh, that's most, worshiped counsel. I'm not sure of what the break-even point I would have to use to be more restful with that, but there's certainly a lot of weight to the amount of steel that we ship out. There's three bins that go over ninety hundred dollars. We've got those three big bins that go over three that come in. We don't pay for the bins, or bin pay. I think that green steel remains, and we don't pay twenty five a day. So it's just transportation costs. I certainly want to, I know on our statements, and again, they will indicate what the revenue we got from the tonnage in relation to the steel.
Okay. Counselor Hall?
And just to follow up, if you could send that information out by email at some point, just so we had some idea of where the costs are and that. And the three bins that go out, what are they, sent out weekly, would you say, Mr. Beal? Or are they every couple of weeks we get those? Or does it change through the seasons, or?
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, Ms. Thompson, worshiped counsel. So bins are sent out on our request, so when they are full, we pack them, bring our backup down, pack them down, get it to capacity. But to be honest with you, Counselor Hall, I don't know where most of our steel comes from, because it just seems to appear. And I've seen vehicles down there that I've never seen before. We just don't have a very neat policy in place that prevents us from checking where these vehicles are coming from, where the steel is coming from. It seems cheap rock community for a full town on the side, breaking their steel or scrap here. So what's the best way to pay them for it?
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Beal. I do think we need to work on the control aspects of it down there. Counselor Hall, another follow?
Yeah, no, and just to counsel, is that, you know, that's always been the thing that we grapple with with the transfer station, is that if we start charging people, is this stuff going to end up in the woods if we start charging? But I mean, we're hearing it right from our staff that, and I've been down there lots as well, and you see these vehicles, and it's like, oh, man, like, I didn't know that was down there, and there's parts off of that or whatever, but it's like, where did that come from? Where did that vehicle come? I've never seen that vehicle around Tumbler Ridge before. Was that somebody's backyard, or what? And it's, you know, I think it might be time to look at that report again and have the debate amongst this council. We've had this in previous councils to decide, is this something that we want to negotiate? Do we want to even look at this going down this road? I mean, it's a balancing act, and we've seen, we all heard what happened with the vehicle that was wrecked, basically, up the road to Sanctuary Valley, that was reported to the RCMP, that was reported to the environment, that was reported to every, the reported poacher polluter line, and nothing got done about it. So that's my concern about if we go and start charging people for vehicles and stuff going down to the dump. I mean, if they aren't taking care of that stuff when it's proven, you know who the person is, the insurance is still in the vehicle, that the plates are ran by the RCMP, they know who it is, and they still didn't do anything about it, how are we ever going to get anything done about other vehicles if we shut our dump down for people dumping vehicles?
Yeah.
I still think it would be worth the conversation and have a, you know, get the information from staff, and if no one else is going to read that alternative recommendation, I think we should at some point, too.
Yeah, I am in favor of the alternative recommendation. I think I would like to bring it forward as well, but one thing I wanted to pose to council, maybe for their consideration, is something I've seen in the past or in a different area, is a badge similar to this, maybe a little smaller, laminated, where it's a registration number for every resident or household. And then, you know, when you go down to the dump, you can, you can show the number to the operator. They know you're from town, you're free to dump because you pay your taxes every year for that service. If you don't have that number, I think there should be a fee. You know, there can be a fee structure developed for all kinds of different waste. If you're from out of town, I think you should pay, because rightfully so, you're not paying the taxes to have that service. So that's one way. The PRD for the rural residents, they have a coupon book, and I was talking to the chair, and he said his coupon book lasts pretty much the entire year. He might have to pay the last couple of times in the year, but there is an option to get another coupon for a fee or whatever it might be. So they run on a coupon system, and then the operator would collect that. I think we need to step up the control aspect for our residents, because I don't think it's fair that our residents are paying for the region's garbage as well, especially down here. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I mean, I think, I agree with both yourself and Counselor Hall, and we need to have a little more regulation down there. We had a discussion about the scales, it seemed like, well, that was just a too large of a cost. Maybe it's, you know, we need to look at something to regulate what's going on down there. Because I do, we can't, we can't ask our residents to pay for Chetlins and Dawson Creek, so for St. John's, people coming in to dump their waste, especially now that we have the construction waste that we're now taking in, so there's a concern, a lot of people have mentioned that out-of-towners coming in. So maybe we should have something in place.
Uh huh. Yeah. Any other comments? Counselor Hall?
And just a question back to staff, just with this report that would be put together, would there be some emphasis put in on, or I would ask that, would there be some emphasis put in on wood waste? I had a good conversation with our CAO about reasons why we couldn't burn in the spring, and it had a lot to do with the type of wood that we were burning down there, whether it had chemicals in it, or glues, or laminates, or paints, or things of that nature, where we weren't able to just burn it off if it were like, you know, just regular wood waste from mill operations, or a clear fact or something of those nature. But I'd like to look into something, like, just some, is there any other alternative along with the community forest? Could we get some type of a chipper unit that we could, you know, chip the pallets down and pull the nails out, or is there some business venture of some sort there that we could look into? Maybe we just chip it, throw it into our soil waste that we have down there in that report, not just to focus on the one aspect of the steel and the bulky waste, to look at something to do with the wood waste. When I seen us trucking our wood waste out of town last year because of a fire ban, it just doesn't sit right with me, and a lot of residents had mentioned to me about how is it possible to have wood waste out in the bush that sits there for years and years and years, and that's not a fire hazard, but the District of Tumbler Ridge couldn't sit on it for two months until we were allowed to burn it again. And, you know, there was some discussion also about the burning permit back to council that we had at one time, and we're kind of being grandfathered at this point, and, you know, in the report, it says that that may be taken away at some point, but I say we venture that journey now, and we bring it to whoever we got to bring it forward to and say, listen, we've already, we had an incinerator down there for thirty years, or sort of thirty years ago, and, you know, we did have permits to burn, and if we can get permits to burn, then great, we move forward with it, and, but if we can't get them, then we need to move a little quicker on it. I'd rather get it out in the open, get it dealt with, get it off of staff's plate, rather than, don't ask, don't tell. Let's just deal with it and move on. I would hope that somebody would come to their senses and realize we burn off tons and tons and tons of slosh out in the woods everywhere, that we should be able to burn wood waste down there to some degree.
Yeah, I agree with you, Counselor Hall. I think there needs to be alternative to that. I did find out about that permit situation recently, and it's not where we want to be. You know, if we aren't allowed to burn down there, we need to find a better alternative than truck it out of here, because it's very costly, for sure. But I agree, that's a situation that needs some kind of a solution. Any other comments, counsel? Yeah, I'll bring forward the alternative recommendation here. The council requests staff to prepare a report for council regarding the management of waste collected at the TR transfer site. That includes recommendations to implement tipping fees that will offset costs associated with waste collection, and include a number registration system for residents only. Seconder, Counselor Lehman. Discussion. Counselor Hall?
Although I think your number recommend, idea is admirable, and it might work, I just don't want us to be limited to that only idea.
For sure.
Perhaps they have their only idea, and I just want to make sure that that recommendation doesn't limit us to only that.
Yeah. Some sort of a control system. Yeah. Counselor Majinsky?
Yeah, on the lines of control system, like, we have, let's say, contact very close, and they're, they're all ashamed, and they, they already need their in-town permit to go on through, as well as vehicles that have been crashed on our highways, and they are getting pulled out, but they're not very awesome, or fourteen, or whatever, that they're landfills, they're probably way from here, or just, so it's got to be a measure put in place for that stuff.
Sure.
Taken into consideration.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's where, you know, the draft tipping fees schedule would come into play, I think. And, you know, another part of control system that we've seen already in a different report was the scale. There is a scale available at the north, no, Chetlin landfill. And I've spoken with PRD in that regard to see what the scoop is, and basically, it's not, it's not big enough for their scale that they're wanting to use, so they have the new one sitting beside it, ready to be installed. And I just asked them, in their opinion, if it would make sense at our place, and they said, absolutely, if you want to know how much is coming in, absolutely. But, you know, that is another aspect of the control that we have seen in the past. Counselor Majinsky?
And we did have a discussion on that scale, so we did more of a concrete space on that, correct?
Uh, no, I believe there was a place, yeah.
There was?
But I mean, I think that could also be incorporated into this report as well, to show those kinds of options for controls as well. Counselor Majinsky?
We did discuss about typically to charge the residents at that time as well, correct? If we're going to pass it through taxes or through basis down at the landfill.
Yeah, and typically, in the past, all of our, all of our services has basically been collected through our residential taxes as a whole. There hasn't really been a user fee breakdown system. It's just been a collective. Any other comments? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Nine point three, draft naming right policy. Report dated January eighteenth, 2021, from the Director of Corporate Services titled Draft Naming Rights Policy, seeking counsel's consideration of the draft naming rights policy, TR fifty-three. Recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury?
Uh, the council receives a report from the Director of Corporate Services titled Draft Naming Rights Policy for discussion.
Seconder, Counselor Lehman. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Thank you, staff, for coming up with this report. I know it's a tool that we're hoping to use for all of our organizations to help raise funds for particular projects. I have this opportunity for advertising. My, my only thoughts, and I brought this up with, okay, it's just a, first thing is on page seventy-four, number five, we're not allowing anything from public organizations, substance, a business use derived from the sale of alcohol, tobacco, firearms. Marijuana is missing there from that list. I mean, some people think it's under tobacco, some under alcohol. It's just a good idea to have it there.
Yeah.
My only other thoughts to this is, do we want to have a value or percentage value added to potential naming of something? My thoughts is, we don't want to have, you know, somebody's name slapped across a park for two thousand dollars. It's my, it's my only concern. In looking at other sale of advertising, the ICE advertising is an example, two thousand dollars for a portion of the ICE for one seat. So I'm thinking, do you want to have a set value, like a percentage of the budget, or twenty thousand dollars? I don't know, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, it's an interesting point you bring up. There probably should be some kind of a fee structure. You know, I would think, for example, a big billboard over the festival ground would be more expensive than, you know, maybe a smaller billboard on the, on the ball diamonds. I agree with you, counselor, there should be some kind of a fee structure, and maybe that's part of the sale of advertising policy that we could review as well, maybe? Possibly? Any other comments? I want to thank staff for putting this together. It's a very good start, for sure, and it's something that's going to clarify a lot of questions. So I think it's, I think it's well done. Any other comments? Counselor Lehman?
I'm just wondering, I think we need to make people and businesses aware of this opportunity. I don't know what we can do, but, you know, if people or businesses aren't aware, they're not likely to want to, what do you call it? Advertise. So, yeah, I think maybe put out some, you know, the opportunity is there for, to advertise at these different venues.
Yeah, and it's also information needing to know what's available for that advertising, too. I don't think we've set that really in place. Counselor Norbury?
You make a really good point, Counselor Lehman. I know, like, with my experience with the ICE advertising, like, there's, it's almost like both sides of the street need to have information, both companies that want to advertise, as well as organizations that want to utilize the policy to generate revenue, because I've seen it go both ways in that the groups and organizations use that as a tool, once it's finally understood, because it always takes a little while for people to understand how it works. But when they do, I think it can be used from both sides, but, yeah, there's definitely the, whereas, generation, education, how this department can use, it's always a challenge.
Counselor Gukalka?
Yeah, so just a couple of comments on page seventy, the very bottom, council, like, you know, there's a number of different assets that can be available. Consider the applicant on an individual basis, and at that time, you decide where the revenue is allotted. But I think that leaves a window open, like, I mean, I don't want to just bring up certain ones, Norbury, but the Tumbler Ridge Mountain Bike Association, like Pump Track. Any money raised from that, to me, should go directly back to that association. That is the concept, of them to build some, to get money for advertising, to put it back into the association to continue to build. To me, that's same with TRAs and stuff like that, and eventually, my understanding, and council just correct me if I'm wrong, but once that's built, that will hand it back to the district. So my concern there is, we sit here, and we all know how it's done, twenty years now, it might not, maybe we lose track of how it was built, who built it, how they had to fundraise and stuff like that, and all of a sudden, the naming rights change, instead of that money going back to that association, it ends up going to district coffers, just in a regular line-up. General revenue. Hey, that's my concern. To me, that's my concern, the golf course, is we're selling advertising, it's already in the pamphlet, we can sell advertising down to the golf course. Where does the fund go from that sale, from that advertising? It goes back to the general revenue.
Uh, no, it says it goes back to the golf course.
Into the golf course general revenue.
Sale of.
I can't be wrong, I'm pretty sure it's on the revenue.
For the maintenance of the golf course. So whether or not we're actually accounting for that money going back to the maintenance of the golf course is another story, but that's the way the policy reads, yeah.
Right, but how do we count that? It's my concern. So my concern is if a business goes and does some sponsorship down there, to me, that money should be used for revitalizing, whether they're going to redo another hole, that money should be, it should be pulled out, so, so that, you know, to me, whether it's Mr. Beal, or whoever oversees the golf course, and staff, knows that usually want to redo pond on number three or number two, whatever hole has a pond on it. And it costs thirty thousand dollars, and they have forty thousand dollars already from fundraising through sale of advertising. Then they can do it, they don't want to come looking for money from the district tax.
Right. So Ms. Thompson, in regards to the Min thirty-two golf course sale of advertising, is there, is there specific accounting for that money to go back to maintenance of the golf course?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, your counsel. That is something I would have to look at, because I'm not completely familiar with all the accounts yet, it's something I can look up and find.
Okay. Thank you. So the way this policy is written at the moment, a draft policy, is the money would be held within the district for the maintenance or the enhancement of that named facility, right? So it wouldn't be directly to the organization. But by dealing with, the way it reads now, by dealing with it on a case-by-case basis, we could set that out in that contract with the organization. I'm not sure if we want to set up directly to each organization, because the future of every organization is uncertain to some degree. Counselor Gukalka?
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, but I think at this point, we have some strong organizations within this community that are looking at doing naming rights to, to me, use for them, to help them continue on, whether it's trail building or general building down, to me, the playgrounds.
Uh huh.
But to me, we should be earmarked on that money directly back, it shouldn't be a one-off, it's just come in and call council, oh, yeah, this year we're going to give it back, yeah, oh, we're running short, we're going to keep it. Like, to me, that the Pump Track, yes, the district has contributed funds, but to me, that should be earmarked to the Tumbler Ridge Mountain Bike Association. If they all sudden fold, well, obviously, it's obvious goes left. It's going to be something that we're, like, to me.
To the association, or to the actual facility of, like, the Pump Track? Are you thinking?
Like, to me, it should go back to the, to the association. To me, my understanding, and again, council just correct me if I'm wrong, but the concept of, for the mountain bike association, my understanding, it's in the meetings I had, was then to do the naming rates, so they get some money out of that to help start building some uphill trails, downhill trails, whatever's in their plan, they get it mastered. So, like, to me, the alternative, we should bring this to a P and P where it's big, open discussion. It'd give us more time to deal with it, give some more different ideas. I mean, I think the staff capture, captured a lot of discussion from our last, I mean, this conversation, but, I mean, I think we need to make sure these groups that are building new things, or will be building things.